Relax. You're just gonna sit all. Well, it's different. What's up? How about us? Okay, I heard this with our unit. Element which we help. Have speed force.
I'll say.
We'll try it. All right. All right, so that's gonna compare just the. Twenty twenty one. A little more. Thing. After all, your sure breakdown of the percentage of what takes calls. Usually. Other big one. Your percentage of. A lot of that will be. Capital responders. Same training. That I have to certify every years I get re-serve. Something I guess on that. Five weeks breakdown. For the specifics. Which. Eighteen to thirty. Twenty twenty one was like first year. Right? Personal. Think we had one. Here it is. Of course, the information is still there. This is on the page six. I heard of our NDR report. I thought that was pretty good. Sure, no problem. All set up exactly. It can see how people like. You're involved. A lot of those. Almost. And overall. Uh, next one down page seven. Heidi. Why I want there that's part of the drug and narcotics violations. Which I like to attribute hopefully to young. Correct. Again, for me. Hours that do the defense of both of the. It was a less or a chance. Obviously. Overall, those. They're sustaining. So it's true now. I didn't use them. Option and pressure. That's uh.
Oh, that's awesome. Those are great numbers. I've noticed a presence. Just because maybe I'm out of the model for I don't know, but um it leads to some of the provocative factors that they take and obviously. Things that good things happen. Thank you.
There's. All right. It's kind of how. Why um. My business.
We're grateful for you guys. Thank you.
Question. He wants to.
Sounds good. Thank you.
That's good.
Awesome. I know as a. It was a whole winter and I read the conclusion, but I wanted the actual separate. Not actually.
Yeah, okay. All right, let's move on to number eight, Brent.
Okay, this one just touch base on some configuration discussion. Last council, our council meeting, higher succession assessment policy. All bracket issue. Figuring out both factor rating for sure. Down here, stand back and ask. Recast touch base to hear from that should have some question to add. I'll answer that. How do you get? With all the. With understanding on this policy. Yeah. Yeah. Also, um, so that's something. How it started. Probably. It's a kind of different. We were it's something that falls. That was a bigger property basis. A single. Like, you're crossing board. Probably. Then you're there's a doctor. Eight dollars. Trap. Probably. Or. Touch. I don't know. And that is. That they. Close. Basically. Very important. That we require. Of course. Well, that. Problem. Steps. It was very deep. That probably. Since. Doesn't want his policy. Due to the. That's. Problems. Process. So. Problem. So we're. The. That. Probably. At least. We're gonna change it up. So testing. Policy. Other person. So that's not a problem. You can hear also. Proper. So. That. It's inside. All the. Purposes. Since. That's a lot of. Work with. Yes. Studying. Reason. Reason. This is. It's studies. Great. That. Help. At the same time, also. Culture. Back. So. For assessment. Testing problems. How's your second step? And our third step was. Here. I think well. That has been a lot of testing. Purpose. Proper. Properly. Because the staff. So within range of five to five. Grasp the equation. Nearest. Probably the whole term by the size. For instance. Really. Probably. And so. Communication nearest. It's all property. And average. That. As. That. Probably. And so. Or is it? Um. Also, probably. Lots. Us. Most lots. So we were. Able. Success. Let's kind of. Office.
Well, it's all down.
That's the one. Spot. Very well.
Can we put it back to so he's trying to show the forty five?
Yeah, I wanna see what is recommended. Is different.
We did look at this for a while. We still did something for amateurs. But. I need.
Yeah, let's pull up.
It's what. I can, I can tell you. Uh. Single family. One per parcel, multi-family. Public was one per parcel, churches is twenty five per acre, schools forty five per acre. National twenty five per acre. Extreme. Basically. So. Yeah, this is. Here it is. So the numbers that Brent just. Is. I guess my. Finding. We did look at this. A little further. But I, I still feel the.
That's already yours.
Can you give a deep dive like just what you said? Could you? For us, we're going to a little bit murky hill as far as what that involves. Versus just a standard recommendation. I think this is something you compared traffic studies. Did you compare it to other areas, you know, other local regions such as West Fargo or Fargo?
Oh, it's a little bit, but it wasn't necessary to do that because they don't use.
So it's different methodology.
Yeah, they use. Okay. A little bit. Pretty obvious. Engineering study that takes. Hobbies. Types across the states and they study. Average. Down a little. I said. Looked at all of them. Here. Within. Ustro. Central. Divided. A stuff. Different. Free projects. Like. Project. I say we're still higher. So.
So how did you live? That looking to forty five? That, that in essence, how do you did it? Realized they were a little high, said no, we need to make an adjustment there and got us to the level where was it forty five or fifty? Bryce, somebody pushed. Forty five?
School was forty five. When we committed you to dive, we then realized that probably a lot of these. Probably a lot of these averages are based on. That. Did we pull up all? In space and type space. That's. Not everything that's non-built. All of it support. On. Fell. Love building the parking lots. And with that ratio. Well, morning. So. Higher acreage. After. But it just focuses on that. So. In essence. The same. Yeah. Why? So I modified your factors. By the fact that. It's. I should mention, you guys always do have the flex. All taken. That's. That's good. Such as. Always. It works, but they. Higher. So it's really. Saying you guys smell or certain all time. If. Some. So. To that. That. Losses. Necessary. That'll be. Okay, so this is what we had. We should start.
So.
Also. It's still. Still positive. Right? So. Dylan, one thing we talked about a while back here too, you know, single family residential. One. Per parcel, apparently a lot of time we talked about two, possibly three. Um. Was there? Trying to remember what we were talking about. Two versus three. Was there? What was the? Sound like. Say this comparison difference between one, two and three. I mean, it was just basically always split out. That when you say parcel, I think one table would be pocket acre or like mixing up something. Um, it's residential. Parts since we just want parts. It's just okay. Those explain if we. Practically. On her. Personal. Standing. I agree. Practically. And. That. On the argument. On five nine. Time was. That's. That. Didn't. Generating. Traffic.
That would. On the development. So. Land sold. Going forward for their entity purchases that like if it chooses to subdivide. That like that's where it'd be personally. Correct. How about is that land is. If cultural land has been purchased by someone, the gold plaque has been submitted yet?
Then you. Take care of. Of that. So. And there's a whole set. Other problems.
I don't know if everybody's ready to do this whole thing. That's why I wanna make sure that everybody's understanding.
Yep.
So I'll need to split.
Yeah, so it isn't on the title property. Okay. Um. Land. But it's done. You're all pretty sure that. Um, probably. Promise. Sincerely. But. Second. They. They're. Here. So. Said necessary. Bill mentioned. Actually, what we do is if you're able to feature land, solve that, I think. Completely. Size, but say it's forty. You're. Say. This will be the. That's the. Level. Also. I mean. Read it all with that. Some sort. Um. Um. That was on. Things happen. Open. Reading. Great. That. On.
Special assessment. Make adjustments to all to stay or have. Cultural use that could potentially in the future have. On the whole side, but for right now. It's being part of the support, let's say. Farm. At that particular. Farmer landlord. Let's say. They have the option.
But. I mean. It's the yard. Property. Yard. You all have that. People actually part of that. Per. So. If. If they'll stay with the property. If you sell property. Follow. But it's on the side of that. Down. So. Please.
I wanna be clear. This is a big bill. Some brain. A land which is a forest. It's a huge. And you can't possibly as a, as a council, it pleads everyone, but you need to have factors and methodology that apply. To make the instances to make it as fair as we possibly.
Mentioned that. And you're acquiring.
Right.
Not like that. So you're having, I think. That's.
So Dylan, one of the things I mentioned, so on the schools are, should I think we did a seventy or we were talking at one point, dropped it down to forty five. Um. Want to explain why we did that or what? Why we dropped it from seventy down?
Yeah, then. How is that? Probably scared. Right?
Yeah.
On the ratio based on how this. Helped out. On recent. Days. Got that. That ratio.
So the same thing with the commercial, we're at fifty. That was based upon just what we're seeing in.
That the commercial velocity. Yes, like client credit. So. Or restaurants, all sorts of things. We can. That's the one. That's. That's really. That's the one. That's the one. Close.
Mm-hmm. Do you guys have any questions on this?
Do you still feel? After the discussions and over the last several weeks and months of. Commercial. Higher.
Yeah, I do. So. Well.
Basis versus value. And. That's the answer.
I, um, I guess what I'm hearing. About. This, this is what he's. I, I personally. We, we paid. Um. To come up with this, um, assessment policy. Um, he said multiple times to me. This is what he's recommending. So when it comes to. Like. Third. Kind of. I just want to. Say that I trust the people that I've been hired and. Um. That's where I stand.
I should say the, this entire guidance.
No, I understand that. I get that. I mean, but we paid you to help us build this policy. Um.
And we did have quite a few meetings on this too. This wasn't like we did this in three sit downs.
This was a, yeah, it was a long time. And. I. I'm just, I'm really, I'm, I'm still struggling with the numbers that. We might have brought up at one point, so. Um.
Like, I just, I just want to. Understand this. This was presented to. That's why. Always. Yeah. They have some concerns.
What?
Was it?
I understand. What is that? That's. Got your problem. Problem. So. Four. You said. That's. That's awesome. Speak back. Speak back to. Change. That's.
Can I just ask Dylan, do you know what? I, I'm not sure if you know this, but. There was mention of like West Fargo changing their. Um, factoring. So I'm just wondering like. What makes them different than? Do you know what? Okay.
My, my understanding is a. If we're two minutes. And.
Two. I'm sorry.
They first, they dropped.
Awesome.
They're not gonna go forward.
Oh, okay.
That was. But I heard about. So that's.
Yeah.
You chose.
I'm just trying to wrap my memory around this. Our, our numbers versus like the one that. Because it really factors out to like a percentage breakdown. So just look at right. So looking at those numbers is really kind of difficult to grasp that way. All percentage. You know what? What I mean? So I don't, the numbers maybe aren't. So I don't, the numbers maybe aren't. As important as a percentage. Right? Right. So, okay, so when we try to go and redo the numbers, I mean. In, in sort of a layman's way of looking at it, it's pretty much impossible unless you're looking at percentage just by saying, oh, I think that should be one or. You know? I don't know. So I honestly. Like I haven't been involved in this, like I said before, um. In the all the conversations. So. I just would go by the recommendations between the people that are involved and. Uh, going through the conversation with the school and stuff, um. You know, if this is what. If this is what is recommended to us, you guys are comfortable with that, if your conversation with the school board. Uh, that looks fine to me.
I'm more comfortable with this after talking to you.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely what's presented makes a lot of sense, so.
The one area. That's a constant concern. If you're adjusting. So. Probably. Part of the. Parts of. You know, parcel. On what we said. That's. Side of the acres. How's everything? Same line. Parts. We, we generate. Yeah, so more complex. Also. I think. Very. Possible. But really. Part. Like uh. All our partners. Best way to say. Their extract. It's even, it's very. And on her parcel. And then. So. You want to think. Their path. Um. Defense would not. We were to make the investment. Best.
What are your thoughts on this?
There's actually something on that.
Okay.
Jeff, you got any thoughts on this?
Um. I agree. It's not completely. You know, the back of the person. Um. But then back. Um. The only thoughts I guess I have. For sure. Trying to think of my sort of town. Factor right there. I. Schools. I would go along with whatever. Said is approved. Um, that. I realize. West Harbor School of this rate was not happy with that number, but. As we all know. We have assessments. No ways that we have, not everybody's that we have.
Plus, the other thing we need to keep in mind here too is the special assessment. She doesn't. Right. Policy. We see something. They get into a little bit more. They could work those. Still have to improve. They might see.
With this, we have. Backing up. Actual. Should be. If we're no more comfortable. Trying to decide numbers on their own. So at that point. We have a. Why? Explaners.
So. All right. Does anybody want to make? Hope to carry out. Want to make changes to that?
I, I think that's fair. I, I was. One. The schools. Were very interested in maintaining a relationship with. The West Harbor. Based on what I'm hearing. Um, consultant. It appears as if they have taken. Preparation in urban versus rural. Concerns that was brought up just. They have also taken into consideration. Traffic codes, I told. And the school was looking at a bigger timeframe that was actually utilized for this. And. The construction that are coming. On growth, we have upcoming. I'm personally very satisfied with the recommendation. So. At this point in time, I see no reason to engage from consultant touching on. We pay good money to a consultant to make a recommendation. And, and we have an opportunity to run this by our special assessment committee. They have to have somewhere to go with this. They have to have an opportunity to up or down. And if we make those changes here, we don't give them that opportunity. So. I, I'm in agreement. I would prefer to. Um. After hearing what everyone else has said. If there's no further protest. I would make a motion. To. Accept. Special assessment policy. As recommended. With the exception only. Of making the change to the public. Category. At a factor of five per acre. With your agreement. I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Okay. That is something we talked about before. Change.
Second that.
Okay, anyone do the second on that? I'll roll call this one just because of, so Sarah?
Yes.
Naomi?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Lucas, you got the temp bond deal. It's good to see you got.
We're, we're to the council. Uh, the next item is the temporary funding of bonds. We need to pay. Branders resolution sheet full title for that. Position is actually. Authorizing the issuance of great. When. Changing them. Great money. Bonds. Series. To. Gain. Uh, this. Resolution, what it does is it sets. Pricing committees, the committee that this council designates. To handle accepting bonds for these projects. Sets an amount that actually will not. All to be exceeded for those projects. Sets. Rate that will not.
But sorry, Lucas, it sets a committee?
Yes, you guys will establish a committee. So the, the pricing committee is typically the mayor and the city auditor. That way they have your guys. Going forward. Not to exceed a month. Um, for those kinds of items. This is the standard. Resolution.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding it completely.
Yes, yeah. Any other questions? Please let me know. Um, and then Mike Manstrom, John Love here. All ears too. So if you guys have any questions for. The experts. Uh, they're also here. Uh, but just so you are aware, the nine projects that we are discussing. Uh, under this parameters. Are sanitary sewer improvement district twenty twenty-one dash four. Station. Sanitary sewer improvement district twenty twenty-one dash six, another one station. Water sewer storm. Street improvement. Number. Seven. Which is near Creek. State one two. Water sewer street improvement district twenty twenty-two dash one, which is this industrial ride. Water sewer storm. Number. Two. That's two. This lot number seven. Storm, uh, sewer storm and street improvement. Two that four. It's wall advocates on the left side. Water sewer storm. Street improvement. Number. Two that five. Mid lane states. Phase two. Water sewer storm and street improvement. Twenty-two. Twenty-two dash six. And twenty-two dash seven. South. The nine total projects that this branders resolution covers. Five of the nine will be backed by letters of credit. From developers. Uh, and so that total amount. Um. The ones who set the, the pricing committee consisting of the mayor, the city auditor. There then authorized it to sell the bonds. City has the ratings all with movies this Thursday. Uh, this one coming up then. So that the maximum power amount in both bonds. Fifty-six million. Nine projects, then interest. Um, maximum interest on both bonds, you know, this. Four point nine five percent. So that's what this branders resolution does. It says that maybe. Says an amount that the bond will not exceed the nine projects. And also says the maximum. Interest rate that. Basically. Cannot exceed.
This five percent still valid?
That, that would be straight to be that four point five.
Four point five.
So as far as the interest rate.
I know.
We have the expert.
Yep.
Lucas is pretty much covered everything. The purpose of the. That part of the law that we. Pricing committee. That we all know and scream while we tell it to you. Tell me. Saying you're pressing the specific page. And, and working, you can also be. Take a difference in expressions. For. Forty percent. Of. Oh. This resolution involves. People of price on a debt. This is way on. And hopefully there's no debt comped. Tell people the way we release. Go forward to. It's a great. Not. But the expressions of. God, you have to tell them. I said, please, words. That may. They have. All this. We can probably. It's not. Specifically. That's certainly not true. And as far as we install. Don't be a bad. Something. Just to. Do. Of course. I suppose the way of this. You start over. There's no cost. Of that. And the fifty-six million actually we said so. That was interesting. Fifty-eight percent is the email then. Just in case that. Bottom rest. Totally. Point seven. We don't have. Dollar interest. I wrote down. Did I hear?
Fifty-six. Yes.
Yep, this is. They'll stay on procedure. Try to hear the basis.
Oh, do you have a one minute call? I just sit down and the money is available.
Then we'll go. But then we'll go to permanent bonding once you know what the final costs are on this, uh, project. So. It saves money.
I want to ask a real quick question just so that. Here. Understands. What do we do? If. Have five. Get now. By the time. Track around for permanent bonding. Your strength.
Look.
Being a free. Just about every city.
Yeah, same.
We're on the same position.
Right, I know. This, this is the thing we have to think about because we're spending money from. Projects that we've determined and needed whatnot. Want to make sure that. They're. Being responsible.
Part of that's that letter of credit thing. That's why we make sure that. Some of these projects, especially they involve developers, that there's that letter of credit. What's the.
It is. The ones that were outstanding last week. For the last week.
Heard about the. May one or December. Well, it's. We're checking. Getting. The we have it. To.
Oh.
That one. If you gather. I know. They.
Yeah, they, they actually have it.
They had a draft heaven and everything. It's just. Good thing.
Oh.
So now they have to go through the process.
They absolutely process.
Yeah, so they have the. Uh. Wednesday. Yeah. It's just.
Yeah. If for some reason. That does not come to you on the school.
Then they. Yeah. Uh. Check out. If you're big guys. Versus.
Thank you.
Governor reads all. Thirty. So that's why.
Any other questions, guys? Anything else Mike that you wanted to just? I mean, that's pretty much. That's the highlights.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to be looking for him to accept the, uh. Parameters resolution. As he is.
Second.
This is motion. Chelsea, this is second. All right, I'll roll call this one too. Right now, Sarah?
Yes.
Naomi?
Yeah.
Chelsea? Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. She carries. It's one to ten. Jim?
Here we go.
Thanks, Mike.
Only ten days. As. Call them off. Avenue. That this project. Up. I didn't want. Don't ask us. What's about to be on. On. Gas. Owner of the property. Work. Just work for the best with W L C. He has requested that the city. Before. The drive. About three hundred. Approximately. Right. Five one. Would be that straight over. Dollars. The owner under the representative. Oh. The, the city was requesting the city provide a direct connection for. Better get access to. Parking lot. At the corner in the town. Maybe you're all across. Right now. Water sewer movement of the street. Gas station. I think. Something. That's what I need to do. Fire. What you have before you. On items. One. There you go, John, that shows the area on the second page. Clear that you're asking for. All right. On. And the last thing we discussed is structural thirty movements. Very strong. So.
I see the map.
I think we have a lot for a truck pulling camper. I'll give you a little bit of this. Truck pulling camper. In the. We have a. People. Semi. By, by case. The best. Party. Parking. Last page, you have a facility plan. Three. Mark.
I know that, but they need to have a what I mean, just for safety purposes.
Well, we are probably at the intersection.
Which would look nicer?
It's a racetrack.
Yeah. You've got multiple lanes on that?
Then we'll move into racetrack then.
I don't like the idea of parents stopping. This is a lecture specifically stated that it goes from school to But what are you moving saying? By having, if you still want to turn them on. Aren't we eliminating money?
Not necessarily because of center.
With that picture of them.
Right.
The benefit of that is by doing a turn.
Yeah, but the issue we've had is we have not designed our road to quite enough. There's so many neighborhoods in this town. And then we put on street parking and people can't get through. So we eliminate the parking, which is great, but it's still, it just feel that forest, you know, and we like wide open spaces here. Everybody does. Everybody talks about wanting big blocks. Everybody wants to have a nice corridor, right? There's going to be a period of time where this corridor is going to be as one of our soul, our self promise. And I don't want to be proud of anybody because one accident on there with a single lane, you have nowhere to go, nowhere to block inside. You would stop traffic in a heartbeat right there. And you would inhibit flow until you could hear that without having something to the center where people can get around. Even for emergency services, they don't like it.
So let's look at that. As this would like now, all those full of traffic, there's a parking problem. But the best
Why the heck was the last version designed the way it was? And that after it's been brought to all my neighbors and everybody's in agreement with this change?
Personally, personally, that's everyone. And further looking at this group the second all about that. So the way to try to do sure that it's not a problem.
Have we taken into consideration the fact that six to four thousand is going to be a thousand of the commercial corridor? What are your
I, I personally like, I haven't, I guess, heard anything from Sarah that makes me want to go against doing it this way. Just because I think it'll be nicer looking. You still have the turning lanes. It'll, it'll, it will tighten the road, but it will make it feel not as open to driving, you know, to be speeding.
So a lot of
It'll be tighter, so that's Is that what you Well, yeah, it just I like the idea of pulling out the turn lanes at the turning points. I think that's nice.
So maybe six thousand one. I just grabbed all of this, this other one, we can outside my happen. Area. Call up there is the first interview to that. Director. They were just about George. Being there. What is the wrong in running away? We'll be solving those parts. Having lots. And sensitive. And I'm like sensing. Bishop. Doesn't get here in seven. Two lanes. Here. She's a little hard. So hard. Eventually area. Here. Okay. You got one. Okay. So I don't know how this is working. Oh, seven. So we have been John.
So what seems like suggesting like a bit more showing?
Is this, this is largely is it the two lane?
Do you have a drawing of the two lane? It seems like that road north of the school with the source. We are making these changes. Traffic jam. They give children in marches of services. Try to get the part of us. Just terrible. What have you all been having got for me? It's hurting tonight. Actuate. Right? How do you get right between the two schools? It's just, we have to look at the worst now. We also have to take into consideration cost. And we are looking at the cost of this here. But I think I'm one of the people that get back on right away on this. Do that. I have to, to make sure that we have a proper form or to get back in.
Right now, everything is back behind. Right now, it's pretty good. Die of life. So every live I'm worried. Thank God.
And there was
Now here. Correct.
Yeah, that, that already always concerned. It'd be great actually to make something else. I guess.
Well, it's gonna come down to you guys, you know, the larger road there's gonna cost more. It's just like, we're all comfortable with that. I got no problem.
Spend the money to pay Christians of all concrete so that buses can travel. Now we're looking at a core, frankly, between we're like, well, geez. Cost, I mean, I, I get it, but it's kind of like this isn't where the shortcuts are taken.
Get them issued. So I, I didn't have a problem with the three. I was just wondering, you know, on clarification from Sarah on the turning of the buses or buses stopping there. I'm always most concerned about just snow removal, stuff like that. That's why I'm not really found just the two lane, but obviously we're not having parking on the street there. Have to enforce that. Um, it's like, still see that being a problem. The I don't know how much more use having two multi-use paths there.
It was a resident.
Okay.
And the reason they must consider making that as a sidewalk.
So we would have to maintain snow.
That's my neighbors.
Got it?
I'd be open with you. That was where it came from.
So, so there was petitioning from the east side of the road then to get the multi-use path, but on that side and have the left side just
Uh, no, they said we're gonna do one, you might as well do both. Cause we had proposed sidewalk on one side, shared use path on the other, which is somewhat typical along our two roads and collectors, just to kind of divide you like circles and whatever. They said, well, maintain the sidewalk. Probably over. Maintain the shared use path, use of the city. Take a share.
I, I think you say when you do have shared use paths on both sides like that, it does make that corner or needs to grant you just, you know, on the cross street, especially if you're doing so you want really pedestrian activity along there, especially as sixty-fourth does end up being a commercial area. You'd have quite a few people walking up and down there. That are the most households to get out to that commercial or get food from. So I could, from what I've seen where you do see that, I could find some city in some places where like all our material roads, for example, they have policies where they put multi-use paths on both sides and they get out collector, they say collector. Like that one side sidewalk and others, so I just
Give me, give me a ballpark. How many homes are going to be in South Dale Harbs when it's completely built out? Ballparkish.
Well, it's that work was under four, there's two of us.
I had seven hundred in my apartment.
I would say six to seven, yeah.
And then we're talking about, and we're talking about the possibility of a meeting that was had today with future growth to the east of this area and how many homes approximately?
They, they, they
Close in type thing.
Similar brand to South Dale. I mean, it's So
And there is multifamily, well, immediately to the south.
South. South or right.
Just keep in mind, those people have to get onto do that high density, high density, high density. And you want to make that road small. What have it?
Tell me what's your thoughts on that.
I just think about driving in some of those residential areas in part all. A, a lot of times they don't have those center. It used to be, you know, there's steady traffic, but it's not. Doesn't seem heavy. You know, I would definitely think consideration on the school would be important as long as we have the turning lanes where we, where they're needed. I guess that's right. Honestly, if it's three lanes. I can see, you know, yes, if there was an emergency.
First. I have a high school right there and it's just, that's all young kids and I've seen how they drive. They park on the side. It's, you know, and I'm just going, uh, the last thing I need.
I'll take some training.
Right? Jeff? I'm open.
Right. We're talking about young drivers? What are we talking about now? I'm fine with the three lanes. I just, I wanted your, your input on what you were thinking when you said the school bus makes lots of stops. That's all I wanted. It's just, okay, what do you mean by that?
So Jimmy need an action on this one? Or he just wants to just talk to you about three lane?
Do you have a recommendation, I guess? Like a bit on the
My son is up there. Sixty-fourth is going to be a direct to standpoint. So the reason we proposed it is similar. By this is looking through the support. See what's your thoughts for the car. There hasn't been a trend with the road sides. Part of probably pushing straight down. So based on why it opens to right now, or like size. If you ask a concern why but that's question.
You can't even see them coming.
Hey, stop speeding then.
Yes. Well, I mean, they're bad.
You're getting airborne on a speed table.
Not even airborne, like those ones behind on itself set of Costco. You guys go over there? Yeah, I don't, I hate those. They kind of just come out of nowhere. If you're going twenty-five, I mean, that's the speed limit. They still are annoying.
Traffic should naturally slow down going around roundabout.
It should. If it's a big enough roundabout, I mean, some of those ones you can drive over the top.
I know.
So right now, we are, we are
I don't drive like this.
You would know this, yes.
I can, I take notes, you know, and so.
As you're going over it, catch it. Right now, we are planning to just start, they have to start the jogging and right now, we just all through that.
Would that be a stopping, like always stop?
Right now, in the interim.
That makes sense.
And then next but that won't I'm going to trade for it. Um, it's true.
We know.
That's how, that's how it works. You put a brown body in or you shut down Conny Road seventeen. Put a roundabout in to set up this road. That's how it works. Your choice. Well, so what's gonna happen on sixty-fourth and seventeen next year? That road's gonna be taken down along with the cult, the box culverts that are gonna be put in and then the updates are gonna make fifty seconds. So you got a whole stretch there. It's just gonna be offline. What do you mean no decisions? Like they don't know where the detours are going? Okay. The, the thought process was That's another topic then. Okay.
The potential traffic. Dusty was just that.
I'm assuming you guys are planning to have another meeting about that and so they can kind of More than one. Yeah. We had kind of longer. Yeah, I'm sure, cause that's gonna be a big deal. Okay. So I got what I was Okay. We'll move along though. Let's go on to thirteen. Thirteen A and then the thirteen B is the annexation. Do it, go.
So the reason we're in it doesn't affect reading.
No changes. Okay, anybody got any questions on that? Okay, I'll look for motion to accept the second reading as is.
Come on.
Chelsea makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Yeah, makes a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So everybody, okay, the annexation, second reading.
So the, this annexation, Mr. Mayor is for a property that's west of Los River. So we did our first reading at the last meeting. This is just a second meeting of that annexation ordinance. We'll have that area on a mile or for you to sign and certify to that annexation. Once that is reported, annexation is effective. Taxation services is effective January first.
Yeah. There were no changes to it, so everything is as it was. It's a look for a motion to accept second reading. Okay, Sarah makes a motion. Can I get a second? Tell me he does a second. All right, all in favor, say aye. From Kerry is all right, fourteen, Brent.
Oh, you
I can just take
I was gonna say you're on.
Yeah. So the, the city of Morris, Augustus having issues with parking in the city. Friends and I met with Casper Sheriff's Office, discussed what the issues were and then how we can better enforce traffic issues in cities. What we did is I went through all the parking regulations and the city's code and it made changes. Like, we'll see, you guys all get this in your pack and you get those. Okay, so relatively short. The sheriff actually wanted a change to the definition of trailer to include the red line version in that section two.
Easy, sir, easy.
Yes. Section two, we wanted to get rid of the dates where there's no parking. Um, and basically just now before we, wherever the sign says no parking, it's just enforced. Whatever it says on the sign and that's how it should be. It's a, it's on ordinance.
Right.
And so that's the big crux of this ordinance change was that the city needs to get better at putting up signage. Or whereas where there is or is not parking in the city, the board relied on two signs on each end of town said no overnight parking. Now is it? So this is just getting to be in line with what the century code requires. Again, in this section two, we're also getting rid of the no parking between midnight and nine AM. Section three adds trailer in there because that wasn't included. So I want to make sure that there's no parking trailers on sidewalks.
Let's go back to section two. Why did we change the fine amount?
Uh, to be in line with century code.
Century code?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Section four, um, that would be exceptions along with the fire. So we removed that other language. But that reference was from the time. Section five. Added in emergency services. That wasn't divided from work because it had police officer on there. Fire and rescue are also included on there. And then again, section six, it changes, so it's just twenty dollar citation. And that's to be in line with how we have the entry code. Section seven, just added a bond for an officer in there. Instead of just being the chief of the police is a very limited. Section eight gets rid of an unnecessary provision in there. Because parking again will be enforced via signs, you know, second, say they can't park. And then again, section nine, the unnecessary provision in it. Created by the science. Things that can park in sometimes. That's what it does, cleans it up, makes it more efficient. Makes it so public will rely on signs rather than what the city has in ordinance. And that way sheriff's office buying citations, starting issuing citations based on what we're changing. Issues with them. You should say, so.
Gets us in line with century code too. I mean, so that stuff's been outdated for a while, so.
Yeah, so we should have everything that you got, Brent, I think. That was the sheriff last week, week four.
We had results, the sheriff's department. They had no issues with that. Parking is challenges for horses, enforcement, yeah, the science just said to the north and south of the town. Sheriff's part. States for emergency, that is a signage. We're saying parking, uh, this addressing trailers, the public. Oh, it's gonna hold. Here's the others parked all.
There's trailers parked on both sides.
Yes, and we could actually like the valor press department where they have their itself. That's a trailer's happening. What does that mean? Do the, the best forces to probably do it in the segments. Well. In the street, that's a little understatement that by upstreet's can actually support parking on one side, both sides, or both sides. And then to oh, and then like what's saying? Yep. Side of the street. Since factor is a bomb, I mean, I can scroll on this one side of the street. Different reasons behind it. You know, so actually, well, there's lots of
Right, we, we, we lack methodology right now. So if we stopped this ordinance with these changes, thank you, Lucas. Then how do we create a methodology that makes sense and that can be enforced for everyone, not just certain areas of the city? I don't want to target any one area or leave out any one area. I think that we need to have that methodology. Thrilled with, yes, the consistency is due, which I'm thrilled with this thing.
It will take us a little bit of time after it's all placed, be able to get all the signage from town. That's one, signs take a while to get, should now. And two, identifying street that's developments. That shouldn't be as hard. It's just gonna side of the street we have no working on there, west of the criteria. okay, side of the street, we have no working on there, what's the criteria there?
I do, I do know that's been married from where but he's gonna need to trust the burning radius and all that, so.
Yes, we have a lot more signs that say no parking in town, but it's awesome.
But we're, we're talking about one side of the road, per town.
Based on, based on
Oral changes of hybrids.
Okay.
Alright, well, I'll make a motion to, uh, sorry, you got the parking coordinates?
Yeah, did you say, yup, Naomi made it first, I'll give the second. There is a second, alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Carrie.
Thank you for your work on this, this has been, uh, a struggle, I know, but consistency is-
Okay, let's move on to the next one, Brent. Brent, you got this one?
Yeah, the next one here is received a request from vacant herbs to be able to have fireworks this weekend, the fifth. Having a giant Holmes concert, uh, street dance. Closure request, council approved the street closures here at the last council meeting. Figures in having this fireworks, twenty-fifth, because they've been, and that they're gonna be still like to do some fireworks, but they wanted to do it.
Just say what time they want to shoot them off?
Oh, right, what time is the-
They don't want them going off at midnight, that's all, you know?
Well, that's what it would be, because they're doing that the same, is that the same night as the concert? Yeah, so that's the same night as the concert.
Yeah, it's a, it's a midnight. Uh, fire has renewed location for laying out the fireworks, or you do
By Cedar Center or literally-
Just a lighter out here.
In the parking lot, the gravel area.
Yeah, we better make sure it gets communicated to residents that they're gonna go at midnight, because we're gonna take a lot of phone calls otherwise. Sheriff's Department will get a few little nasty grams too. Let's just make sure everybody's aware that we're gonna blow them at midnight, that's, to me, that's a little late, but okay. Yeah, that's what I'd like them to do, but I understand they're gonna do it when the concert's over, right?
Or can they just call it, stop the concert?
Their concert, it was, they're, they're saying, don't, don't unfollow, so you're gonna have music, like, concert going.
I'm assuming at some point they'd have an intermission, maybe that's when they should do it.
Yeah, can we just ask them to do it, maybe, not like it much matters anyways, blaring music is gonna keep-
Well, that's, is louder and it doesn't affect animals and, like, military people and stuff, so.
That's what I'm saying, I'd-
You, you're not, you are not too far away from
Yeah, but they're not gonna make as much racket as this will at midnight. And it's not on, it's not during the magic window.
No, outside the window, yeah.
Can we have them do it earlier? Can we just say, can you do an intermission?
I'd say ten o'clock, because it's probably a good time, dusk enough by then, move out. Ten, ten thirty?
Is it dark enough at ten?
Is it dark at ten?
Dark enough, but I mean, ten thirty I think would be the latest, um, if we're gonna do that.
Yeah, I, I would agree. Can we do like ten thirty?
Right after the longest thing of the year, right, don't we have the summer solstice?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah.
I'm just saying, usually you shoot fireworks at dusk. Shoot them at dusk.
People really suffer through the Fourth of July stuff, so.
So during the Fourth of July timeframe, it starts June twenty-seventh, goes to July sixth, uh, but from June twenty-seventh to July third, you go until eleven.
So if we said ten thirty, they'd probably be done by eleven, at least from ten forty-five, they'd be done by eleven.
Why don't we just follow what's in that first, so that it's consistent, you know?
Yeah, just have it done by eleven. That way they can figure out the timing, because I don't remember how long it takes in the blow-off, they had a pretty good show last time they did it, so. You guys alright with that, have it done before eleven?
Yeah, I can make a motion.
Alright, Naomi makes a motion to approve the, uh, permit with their stipulation that the show is done by eleven o'clock, the fireworks show.
Yes.
Okay, second from Chelsea, alright, all in favor say aye. So everybody, since unanimous, alright, let's move on to the food truck deal, Brent.
Hey, we have four, you there are two requests for, uh, permits for a food truck, we have food trucks in town, vendor permits, uh, next item is the second reading, so after tonight.
Oh, good, I was gonna say, why is he still calling those?
We gotta do one more reading. Yeah, if it does. Yeah, that'll be a long-winded one, right? Sarah?
Uh, but anyway, it's one is for good base taco, and the other one's for-
They have what they need from the state health department? Then let's combine them, unless somebody's got a problem with that.
Shouldn't we approve the vendor permits, sir?
Chelsea, Jeff, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
From Carrie's, let's do the food truck ordinance, so we don't have to do this again.
It's a tough one, it's a reading for food truck ordinance.
Anybody got anything you wanna add or say on this one?
No, hallelujah.
Okay, let's, looking for a motion. Chelsea does a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion Carrie's, eighteen A, let's go.
I think that was fastest.
So don't slow it down, go man.
I know, before the sun sets. On the longest day.
What you got before you is the update of utility rates, so your residential rates updating that, um, we do have residential rates that identify as, uh, like building permits, and other pieces too, but this is like, utilities, help this, help clarify, identify what the rates are, the bigger format for you to see. Differences, so exhibit, says exhibit a twice here, one that says June twenty twenty-two, uh, that's currently what we do for water. Um, it identifies the ballpark for water to be at six fifty, so contractors or farmers wanna get water from the city, it's six, six fifty per thousand gallons. If we have to replace a water meter, then you replace the cost of the meter plus twenty percent insurance cost, that's a building thermostat, that meter and our staff signed it up for the system. We still have water usage for this time period at forty per thousand gallons of basin, so that is our current rates right now. Uh, sewer did not change, other than not metered locations, we have a couple left here. Or there's a couple trailers that only have meters, so we have that based on the average usage, uh, we had the overall rate before, where it was combined water sewer, so we're breaking it now. Garbage, obviously, it, 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 it's just additional tolls, it's twelve dollars, you want additional cycle. Porchway vectors did same. Have the if order from two back in June twenty twenty-two. Tell this next one here. Questions so far? Maybe it's just really laying out what the next one here for effective October twenty twenty-two, this is a little more significant change. Really what is, what we're trying to do is be consistent with casserole water, why? Because half the city roughly is on casserole water, the other half, not yet, but hopefully by this date, by telling back a little bit, to make sure that we are live with casserole before the next reading happens. Casserole, they charge different base, so that monthly fixed charge, you have four column in. If you have a different sized meter, so let's say you have a four inch water meter, you pay a bigger base. Why? Because there's a lot more water through a four inch meter than you can So the base fee is different, that should be consistent with casserole. The other change, and this just happened recently, I actually found out on casserole wire customer, and I found this out on my utility bill. But it's happening, uh, but they introduced a tier usage process, so our system. From May to September after now, but we're not proposing really this, take effect for this year, it'll be starting in October, so really next year, uh, because we're not in casserole yet. But casserole customers will pay first really up to six thousand gallons, I believe it was, pays five forty per thousand. Then that next year, from six to ten thousand gallons, they pay six forty, and then anything above that ten thousand gallons, they're gonna pay seven forty per thousand. So it really gets into being consistent with casserole. Also, they introduced that tier approach to help curb usage a little bit, uh, you'll see the, this happened more in drought prone communities or areas, like, when I was in Kansas, they used their tier approach and that tier approach was significantly higher, uh, where you get down to like tier three, you're talking twenty-five, twenty-eight dollars per thousand gallons. This isn't that, but, but they're trying to do, I believe, is to curb usage, last year, for example, we were going through drought period time, they're using a lot of places, we're using more than aquifer, I can't say if casserole was, I know we dealt with that here, of course, and one way to help help combat that and have people more conscious of it is obviously no use. That's why we have that. Uh, other than that, rates were the same, there's just a longer introducing that, that having this take effect October first twenty twenty-two, hopefully we don't have to keep pushing to the, like, back. However, we do not want to rely on rates to help rely on our casserole. So I wanna make sure that we are live, last we heard that we're ready, the pockets never, but that includes in more examples, I wanna make sure we do, should hopefully land.
This might be a really dumb question, but how do you, how do you know, like, what meter size people have?
We typically look at, like, outside of the building, the fixtures they have, pretty much all residential, we have that three quarter, five eights, basically same size. That's really your bulk customer, or your customers with like a big facility, like a school, school and so then you got like, high school, middle school, they may be a bigger one, or they may have two connections, they may have like, two four inches, depending on the size of it, so they a lot of times will size them based on how much water they use, how many bathroom toilets.
How do we keep track, like, how do they keep, like, do they know, like, when they put it in?
So two thousand seventeen, eighteen, city went through replacement years of all, all the houses.
Yeah.
City moved five eights, about three quarter inch, hyper over census.
Yeah.
Allied meters, everything that's installed out of the cap and the city staff.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
So yeah, all residential owners.
I remember mine getting updated, but I just didn't know how you guys kept track of like what the monthly fixed charge should be for each.
Yeah, we reported, and all locations have a, uh, reader type built in their meter, so they have serial numbers in the meter, serial number type of the reader, and that reader position, oh, okay, yup. That meter uses water.
Okay, okay, cool. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on that?
No, but I do appreciate, you know, waiting tell these, you know, these residents, like, get the actual casserole water.
Other than October, start date, uh, really what changed on this one was those were the main changes.
But we're getting on casserole system, so we're hearing the rates.
Consistent with them, because they're arrested, say right here at Fire Hall, other resident, casserole service area, they're getting the same water, they should
Well, I think that there might be a little bit of confusion, uh, with people like myself who live in their old forests with the regular horse water, uh, I don't think that people realize, uh, the water rates that other people are actually, uh, have been paying for years, so I think it, it might be a little bit of an eye opener for them, a little bit of a shock as well, but just knowing that we're consistent across the city, would, you know, to kinda let them know these are the rates that everyone else has been paying.
And that's why we've been trying to raise it over the last few years, so that it's not-
Not such a shock, yeah.
Which is good, that's worked out good.
Yeah.
Alright, so, guys wanna do, wanna make a motion to accept the rates?
Make that motion.
Motion, can I get a second? Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carrie, we got the eighteen point five ISR home agreement, Lucas, go.
Yes, so, Mr. Mayor, uh, we've seen encouraging phone calls today, followed up by a letter Trina Lang, attorney for ISR. Uh, she informed me that the subcontractor that poured the concrete has contacted Britton Sons house movers, they have gotten permission from neighboring property owner, there's a vacant lot. The ISR home, do that vacant lot as a staging area, they're gonna redo the concrete work on the ISR lot and move the house back on it, and Schmitz are supposed to do that this Thursday, what's the date, however you guys might recall, we, we sent them a letter saying that they're in violation, in violation of the city ordinances, they have to have this done by July first.
Right.
So she called me and said, unfortunately, they're not gonna make it by that date, you know, they're gonna have to pour concrete and stuff, so she just asked for a thirty day extension.
No problem.
And that's, I called the mayor to discuss this, this afternoon, I, like I said, I thought it was very encouraging, the parties are working to try to come to a resolution in thirty days, and it wasn't that, that one asking.
They're willing to correct the issue.
Yeah.
He's just gotta draft a letter saying we're okay with it, we're okay with it.
Make a motion directly to me and grant that extension, I'll send a letter.
I see that, that's a good thing, let's make it happen.
Sure, I'll make a motion to have Lucas prepare or draft that letter.
That we're in agreement with the thirty day extension.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that.
Okay.
And that's for the purpose of allowing correction.
Getting that foundation.
Yeah, I mean, she, she has it in this letter that she's sending to, um, while the parties are working diligently, diligently to accomplish this by July one, twenty twenty-two, we respect the request that the July one deadline be extended to July thirty-one.
Can you please make sure that in your response letter, you reference?
All that she says, it's in.
Thank you.
Okay, so, then we had a motion, sir, did a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
From Carrie's, Jim, updates?
Alright, first we have an update for the wall evidence last, uh, we're still working with, we need for more aid gone and the three rules, the recovery law laws, and haven't seen anything from that yet, we did get some good news as far as sovereign lands, we're making discharge. Haven't seen anything from that yet, we did get some good news as far as the sovereign lands from discharge, so water into the Shawnee River. First hand, we're able to prevent that, prevent, save ninety days more than the few five, thirty submitted eastern apps, we're able to prevent that one. Self face of the project. Um, the design is working diligently forward. Then there's. Questions for water and. For that corridor. So I just, I'm going.
Just for Wall Avenue West, what about Wall Avenue East?
Stop that one to come.
Yes.
So, that being said, getting on with the July by, uh. It'll forbid advertising at that time. Plus some encouragement that I do. Uh, aren't you here not? That's encouraging to say that right now, pricing.
We'll see it at the price, yeah.
Just another, um, the appraisal, uh, we talked to their office last week, they're supposed to have the appraisal report done by last Friday. The gal I talked to said that it'll be done early this week, so hopefully we get it tomorrow, that appraisal report. And then we already have purchase agreements drafted, so you just need that value, get those all finalized, keep your guys' blessing, go door to door. Get people to sign them, and there's a provision within that purchase agreement that allows the city to access the property for construction purposes or.
What, what's going on with Wall Avenue East? Or was the whole?
That's on pause. Do I do one section at a time, the way it looks, so I want to try and get this kind of, the gravel portion done this year. Trying to. The gravel being the worst part of the scene.
The whole thing is awful. I'm, I'm sad that we have to wait longer.
But we had to make a judgment call on that.
No, I think that's definitely a good call, considering, if, if you guys can get that done, that'd be awesome, get it done this year.
We probably won't get everything done, but we'll just get the road done.
So outside of that, we can be dragging it next.
I'm, I'm just, I mean, am I here right that the road's going to be dropped, so are we going to go like this? I mean, what, what are we doing? Okay, so. I, I'm just, I'm, I'm making sure that I have a complete understanding. Of what we're doing here, I want it to be.
That brings up my question with Miss Bat Myron that came up then, I mean, are we? He wanted us to reconsider curbing gutter, I guess. Are we, what, at what point are, are we? I'm confused if he's talking about. Yes, so he just. And he just wanted to say that.
I've been in contact. He's, he's directly adjacent to the project. Certain bodies, my lock set. Proximity to the project.
Okay.
So he doesn't like the dust, but then he killed.
Yeah.
But he came here to make public his. Curbing gutter, but. You want me to clear to him that this project is proceeding with curbing gutter? What am I missing?
That's why I was confused.
He's wanted a record.
Okay.
And we feel comfortable with that special assessment with curbing gutter?
That's what we've, that's what we've been talking about.
That is a new policy. Well, I know, I know, but and it's being assessed, the way the assessment was broken down was left side of the bridge, right side of the bridge, separate. So there's not a ton of houses there, it, I mean. I'm just trying to be realistic, you know, as to what those people will get assessed.
Well, he's, so, West project, lazy eight, Westbrook, Lost River, all of the dogs are lost.
No, I get that, yeah, and if we can get that annexed land on the east or the west end of the diversion.
And project just.
I, yeah, and I, some of those e- example numbers on the special assessment, like, those were examples, but they, some of them were a little shot. And it's all changed now. Right, and that's what, you know, I figured, we, and that both were just hypothetical.
Hypothetically.
They were run through.
Yeah.
Project prior to the special assessment.
We wanted to get an idea of what it would look like based on what we know now.
I'm just bringing it up because I have no idea.
Project does, leave after first entrance of. It goes through that one, or through that, and then it goes, then curving gutter goes away and it's still a condition.
Which I think makes sense, and I, yeah, I mean.
It does get fairly tight, if you don't do a curving gutter section from that first entrance.
Yeah.
Lost River, Bridge, you have the open ditch, and if you're trying to squeeze in like that, or sidewalks, all that, it's really difficult to do that.
Yeah. I'm definitely the curving gutter, I. I'm even in opposition to not doing curving gutter on the far west part of that project, just because of the drainage issues and standing water in the ditches. And, I mean, all of this, it's just, our policy, we put in any new road needs to be, it needs to have curving gutter, we don't deviate from that. I'm a firsthand survivor of that, the failure.
If you like curving gutter in here, so right now the project will stop. Pick it up and go through Zion and the version. Taking that out of it.
I mean, I think, yes, curving gutter is so important, but I also think, I mean, there's a realistic dollar amount that we can put on to keep. You know, and what that is, I mean. We've made that dollar amount a hell of a lot more realistic with our new policy, maybe we should run those numbers and see where we're at. Because there are, I, I understand that costs are a concern, and I completely agree with you there. But I will tell you that the repercussions of dealing with failed drainage will end up costing you more in the long run. Yeah, I mean, it's not a conversation, I guess, about pets, so that's all, that's why I'm bringing it up. I'm living it, and I see it every year, every day. I see neighbors that are out there in the springtime, and I've been out there chipping ice with them in front of their driveway because of failed drainage, and it is miserable. It's absolute. And I don't disagree in the new developments, absolutely, it, it would be, you know, like Fifty Second Avenue was asphalt for a long time until they had the funds to pay for it. And it's just, you know, trying to be realistic is all, it's the only reason why I bring it up.
Right, but for right now, we are curving gutter over to entrance to Lost River. The second part of this, we haven't decided on yet. We've got plenty of time to figure that out, so. Anything else on this, Jim? Get what's going on.
Okay, that was the water place, Brad, as you know, Rodney and Mangle was in the high street area tomorrow, I was stuck with him at least once, twice. Uh, working with the contractor, still have to talk with them about. And asphalt. I'll get a little view of that. Now, um, the city was going to test mobile cord last week, and they're. And is now testing that tomorrow morning, APH has top construction online, put the driveways back in. As the city. They have water ready testing. The flavor is planned for the beginning next for Nelson, meeting center. Portion on Park Drive, Lot at Hebert, we're playing, drive some sporter excavations to try to figure out where the pipe began at. Some mysteries were solved, other mysteries were created, so, uh. Step ahead, not to step back. In the right direction.
That's forward progress, right?
Forward progress, they have been spending a lot of time working on the loads, making those on their action. Applied as a mill will come in next, we can take the top four inches off, they're also going to be wider than the original trench, get some of that plumbing asphalt outside. Capital limit as to how wide we can go with our trenches due to flooding sources, but our first attempt, or our first attempt at that was much, um. There were on purpose, knowing that the wall was going to get broken, so now before the paper comes out, the asphalt comes in, they'll, they'll cut that out to what it is. On the mill, they go for just for the pavement, we're supposed to be adding a second crew next week. Working on securing the exits from the rusted street here to get bottom lines, but there's part of that changer that we talked about. Over states of paving, they're trying to do it internally because Ivy Guy has some of that. Does depend on. Landscaping, landscaping is going to be the next couple of, get a landscaping. And do that work, starting in.
Did you ever talk to them, this contractor, about their. Behavior towards the residents?
Same time. That wasn't.
Oh, okay, well, I just wanted to make sure we.
Yeah, it was just, that's the first time. Like I said. Our ass. Try to give them. Borrow in their destruction unit at five, so have some work. That's where we're at on that one, and then sixty-sixth street, we talked about that several days, so. This week.
Pretty good. Let's move on, man. Brett, what you got?
Hey, a couple items, one is last week, our financial director, in your explanation, she was, she would be. He's accepted the financial director petition with Blockhead City. That role, uh, search is underway, or will be underway soon. Spoke with Biggert Tilly, did have a one year guarantee on that, so. Costs that we'd have really in a shell for that search would be posting on like job boards or places like that, and. Travel expense for recruiter. That would come up, that'd be example, cost of the recruiter's time, recruiting costs, all that is covered as part of our agreement with them already. Um, yeah, their recruitment profile ready to go is on the factory here, so should be getting it posted here. At this week, uh, goals early this week, so next week. Other items, our sound masking system install, it's expected to be. Say Thursday this week, it was delayed because they came, they're about to come down to our office. All last week, Box and they give us straight speakers, so. Uh, delayed until they manufacture some correct speakers, so last I heard is actually down here, the Thursday. Last two items I had is, uh, next Monday. Uh, June twenty-seventh, organizational meeting, for state council, so that would be, or not organizational.
Certified.
Certifying election results. That's your code during your last legislative session. Maybe it should roll some pause a little bit, where now we have to certify the results thirteen days after the election. Should be on the twenty-seventh this year, so we have a special meeting for that. Should be a fairly short meeting, county does all the candidacy, they go review, the ballot should be accepted, not a submission, they do it for the whole. So they have a lot of fun. Organizational meeting, oh. Got that, um, twenty-eighth, that's a fairly short age two, um, that's basically swearing. Members. Swearing also member, uh. And appointing. So we'll have that organizational meeting, should be a very short meeting. Do not have the time blocked in yet, I'm making sure logistically. Here. All our bears, so. Just. Speak out that. Costs of all. If you're unable to attend. Tell it in via Teams, or if you're unable to attend. That's all I have.
So, uh, for mine, like Brenton mentioned, we had the elections here last Tuesday. You got with us now after this meeting, huh?
No, last meeting.
So. I've enjoyed working with you, you came on, I'm sad to see you go, but I understand why, so, like I said, I enjoyed working. You're accountable, wish you well. You're back. Sarah, Sarah, we're looking back on again, so welcome back. Also, Stephanie, welcome to the club here, next week, I guess, we'll get to. Monday and Tuesday, um, we'll, Brent and I'll try and line up a time with you, probably to do an orientation. So we can kind of get you as quickly up to speed on all this stuff, so you're ready to drink out of a fire hose for a couple meetings. I'll try and get you up as fast as we can on some of these things, so. See, the other thing I had, I got a bunch of meetings this week, I'm trying to catch up, last week I kind of slacked off and didn't do anything in the evening, but stuff around home. Which had been severely neglected, so back to the trail again this week, here I got some meetings with different people I'm trying to get done, and then there's another. What was that, there's an egg summit get together that we're doing here on Tuesday, I think it is. Be meeting some of those folks, so, the only other thing I was going to mention is in the paper today, the Dairy Queen in town here is looking to open in October, so just keep that in mind. And it is coming, and it will be here in October.
It's in time for winter.
Yeah, which is probably okay, because otherwise it'd be over every other day of summer, so. Uh, that's all I got, Sarah, what do you got?
Uh, I too want to wish special thanks to Chelsea, I know we don't always see eye to eye, but. We always bring unique things to the table, and I have enjoyed you as an asset on our council, so. Thank you for your service. Uh, I too wanted to welcome Stephanie as a new partner on our council, congratulations to you. Um, I did want to make public mention of, uh, Mr. Grant Alex, he ran a, uh, very tasteful campaign, and I wanted to thank him. For putting his name in the hat, uh, we need people to do that, to be willing to do these difficult jobs, and these hard decisions, and be. Constantly, so. So I wanted to make those few comments, um, I also wanted to send a thank you to you gentlemen here on the panel. I know I've put a lot of pressure on you, uh, in the last year and a half, it's not going away for the next four years, however. We have accomplished some really good things, and, uh, today was yet another, um, good show of some things that I don't take a lot of time to put together. Ordinances, obviously, uh, the policies, things like that, and I, I want you all to know that you're working. Talked a little bit about the A T B work, I've had several meetings already last week, I know for a break, I was stuck with the American Works last week. About some new things coming, I'm really excited about the Dairy Queen, I'm also grateful it's not opening now, because I. I, I think, uh, with that proposed location, we're going to get a lot of business, which is really exciting, and some of the things that are proposed to come around that. Continuing the good work there, um. Have some fun coming up after, uh. Please do your best to. We do support everybody, and so we only want the guys to know that. Though we have to make the full decisions. That's all I have this time, I have a lot of things in the works, plus I didn't need to get the.
Okay, sounds good, Neil, what do you got?
Nothing really, Sally, when's our next one fifty? Seventh, so if anybody wants to come, please join us, we'll be there. Church.
Sounds good. Flash words?
Do you think I'm really going to talk? Since it's my last meeting, I'll say something. No, I have a few notes, I just, uh, definitely want to say congratulations to Stephanie and Sarah. Sarah, it's been a privilege working with you as well, and all of the council members that I've worked with. It's been an honor, uh, I've had, I have much more respect for this position being, being a stat here. It's not easy, and especially on Monday nights after you've been working all day, and when you don't feel good sometimes, and you still show up and sit for hours. Um, along with all the other phone calls and different things that you take on a regular basis.
um, along with all the other phone calls and different things that you take on a regular basis. You know, it's, it's kind of a thankless job, I think, a little bit by the community. Um, you guys didn't bring me a cake, so, uh, no. But, no, it's wonderful, and I've grown so much, having a seat up here has helped me to grow so much as a person, and it's just been awesome. Uh, so, that's, that's great, uh, the staff, huge respect for the staff, um, they work really hard, um, another, like, very thankless position, I think that they all hold, um, so always make sure to, to say thank you to them, and, and have the utmost respect for them. Also, Sarah has been continuing to push the trees, so I appreciate that. I want to reiterate that, um, you know, if you drive around Fargo, and West Fargo does a great job with the trees, and you see these developments that are ten years old, and they barely have any trees, and it's very sad, and pretty soon that's gonna be us if we don't get our shit together on the trees, so let's do that. That's all I got.
That's all you got, all right, sounds good. Jeff?
All right, um, first of all, congratulations to Stephanie and Sarah, um, stepping forward. Um, and also, thank you Chelsea, uh, for giving the help of me out here, uh, learning ropes, uh, speaking also. You're gonna be missed. So, uh, last week, I had a talk, a productive call with, uh, Ben Grather from Vector Control, um, to clarify what they do versus what the city does, uh, for, uh, mosquito control. They do the pre, um, I'll call it warfare against mosquitoes, they're, they're all the preliminary controls, um, putting down, uh, the chemicals and stuff, trying to treat them before they hatch, trying to greet, uh, or trying to prevent the problem before it happens. Um, that being said, people that have a lot of standing water in your yards, uh, on their website, you can report where you think there's a lot of mosquitoes to help the vector control out, uh, let them come to your property and take a look around, um. They do have permission to go on anybody's property, so if you see a vehicle show up, um, people start walking around your yards with shirts that say vector control, please just let them do their job. Uh, but they will try to do, uh, a good job monitoring some of the uh, developments that are along the river, or that may have been flooded, uh, earlier this year, to try to help them out. Um, second thing I got was from Metroco, uh, we did get approval for the additional funding, uh, for the transportation alternatives. I sent a written email on that, that, I'm not sure if I have it to you or not, um, they approved it at seventy two percent, uh, for the grant, so we have to pick up the remaining share. Uh, but to me, that was good news, that was both projects that were submitted, both of the, that seventy two percent. And then, uh, I've been getting emails from, uh, Mr. Kashki at Excel Energy, uh, they have what they call a day of service, uh, later on this year. Uh, they're looking for projects to do in the city of Forests, to try to help us out, whether it's, um, painting, uh, picnic tables or something, car wrenches, something like that, uh, something that would be helpful for the city, um, to help our staff out, uh, but just to, a way for them to show that they care about our.
Trenching, yes.
Well, I, I could ask that, but they, they were looking for, you know, ideas besides the normal trenching and gas lines, so. Other than that, uh, that is all I got.
All right, well, I better circle back and say, good job. And great job, and I'll miss you too. I guess I didn't say any of that, like the rest of you. Probably.
Okay, do I need to go through the, one more time through the council?
I'll be able to circle back.
Yeah, did I miss anybody?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
There we go, Chelsea. Chelsea, Jeff, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, done.